Board meeting to order, could I have a roll call?
John Eichman.
Steve Caswell.
Lori G.
Craig Smith.
Ed Mielsche.
And if everyone would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thanks, everybody. We have two upcoming meeting dates, one on January 16th and one on February 20th. We have minutes out for October 3rd, 2017. Has everybody had a chance to review those, or do we want to hold them over for the first meeting in January?
I've previewed it.
You've previewed them?
Yeah.
Okay. And bear with me. So we have, let's see. I think everybody was here, Ed, I think you probably weren't voting that night.
That's the night I sat over there.
Yep, okay. So, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So, second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? It's up to you if you want to abstain or not, if you want.
Yeah, I'll abstain.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We also have on our agenda tonight the adoption of our 2018 minutes, sorry, meetings. The schedule, we normally have, in the past, had meetings on the first and third Tuesdays of the month, and as you guys have probably noticed, we have had less volume and a lot of times we're canceling that second meeting in the month. So what we're recommending is we have one meeting scheduled for the month, and if we have the volume to, or things coming in that warrant having that second meeting during the month, we'll schedule meetings as needed during the course of the year, and we would publish those if needed and as needed. So do I have any questions on the change of our meeting scheduled down to one meeting a month? Okay. And do I have a motion to approve the 2018 meeting dates?
So move.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So the first item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing for Heritage Acre, two lots on East Hook Road. Pam, do we have everything we need to be able to open the public hearing? Okay. And do we have the applicant for Heritage Acre? Great. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So move.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And if we could make sure we have a copy of your plan up on the screen, too. Do you have the electronic copy with you?
It's over here.
Okay. And bear with us for just a moment, so you'll be able to see the plan up on the screen, as well as on the smaller set here on the board. Excellent. Thank you. So what we'll do, since this, this is the first time we've opened this public hearing, let's have you just give an overview of the project and what you're doing, and then we'll go from there.
Mike?
I'm Mike Newton with Scenic Hudson, and I think it'd be helpful just for me to describe Scenic Hudson's mission to start with. So Scenic Hudson is a nonprofit organization, and we, Scenic Hudson preserves land and farms and creates parks that connect people to open space in the Hudson Valley. And our vision is a community of informed and engaged Hudson Valley citizens working to make vibrant cities and towns linked by inviting parks and trails, beautiful and resilient landscapes, and productive farms. So we are working right now with the owner, Heritage Acre LLC, on this acquisition in order to conserve outstanding conservation values, and those include agricultural values such as state-designated high-quality soils, historic agricultural use and access to local food, ecological values, including over a half-mile frontage on the Wiccopy Creek, New York State and federally designated wetlands and highlands-forested ridgescapes, and also scenic values, which include visibility from Fawn Stock State Park and East Hook and East Hook Crossroads. And we've come before the planning board from, at this meeting and the meeting last month, in terms of why we want to subdivide this property. So after the acquisition, we'll be leasing a portion of the property, the Lot 2, which is the top one on the map there, to Fishkill Farms, and we have Josh with Fishkill Farms here as well, who will be restoring it to agricultural use. We ultimately hope to convey this to them, subject to a conservation easement restricting it to agricultural use. The remainder of the property, Lot 1, that's the bottom portion there, and other land that we'll be purchasing from Heritage Acre LLC includes conservation values that we're seeking to protect. Although we do not presently have any plans for the property, possibilities for future use include public access and/or sale to a private party, subject to a permanent conservation easement, which would protect the agricultural, ecological, and scenic values of the property, some of those values that I was discussing before. And I want to just be absolutely clear, Scenic Hudson, we're not housing developers, and we are not requesting the subdivision for this purpose.
When you talk about the conservation easement, do those easements, and I know you've shared a little bit with us, but I think at the last meeting you didn't have the text of that ready yet, you were still kind of working out exactly what that would look like. Do you intend to put, place the conservation easement across the entire, each parcel in its entirety, or will it be portioned out? How will that, how is that coming along?
Well, per the discussion last meeting, and as I noted before, Lot 2, the portion that would be going to, that we're looking to convey to Fishkill Farms ultimately, would be subject to an easement at the time of conveyance, and it would include restrictions to restrict the property to agricultural use. In terms of Lot 1, you know, that would depend, if we were to retain that for a public park, for example, you know, Scenic Hudson would be, remain the owner, we wouldn't put an easement on ourselves. But for, for example, if we were looking to convey it to a private party, we would convey it, the plan would be to convey it subject to a conservation easement, to protect those conservation values, because that is why we're working with Heritage Acre LLC, because we really want to see all the things that I mentioned before protected.
Okay. I think at the last discussion we had, you were making sure there was sufficient access to each parcel?
Mm-hmm.
And you were talking about potentially widening one of the access points with another parcel that I think you owned. Has that been done, or are you putting an easement across that other parcel to allow the access?
What we did, as per the last meeting, is we included another parcel in the application, which is now part of the application, includes a strip of land that will keep us just on the edge and outside of the wetland if access is ever designated through that area. Yeah, as a shared access for that. There was also discussion of easements to the Fire District and to the town, and both of those have been included on the subdivision plan now.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And Tom, I know you were going to look at the proposed easements, has that moved to anything to the town yet?
No, I mean, we'll make that as part of the conclusion.
We're waiting for that.
Right.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members?
Is there a reason you don't put the conservation easement on now, as opposed to waiting for the conveyance?
For, which, for Lot 2?
So, yeah, if I understood what you said, the plan is, is to put the conservation easement on at the time of conveyance.
Right, because, because when we acquire the property, we'll be leasing this to Fishkill Farms, so we wouldn't be able to do the easement until we actually conveyed it to them. We have, you know, we're working on a business relationship so that after a certain period of time, we would then convey it to them, and at the time of conveyance, it would be made subject to a conservation easement.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from board members? I know Michelle hasn't joined us yet, or Dave, but Scott or Tom, anything?
Well, the only thing, I'd just like to maybe clarify a few things, is I've dealt with Scenic Hudson on similar type process in other communities. So for the community that's here and interested in it, what it would be is, Scenic Hudson is acquiring the property, part of it, as has been explained, would be used for farming, and if it was transferred to Fishkill Farms, it would be subject to a conservation easement that restricted to farming and those little uses, maybe a little barn or something like that, that's in conjunction with farming. And the other lot, while owned by Scenic Hudson, would be preserved as open space, and if Scenic Hudson chose to sell it, they would preserve the open space aspect with a conservation easement, which is their mission and is what their goal is, and they do this throughout the Hudson Valley, so it probably is a great way to preserve this large parcel from further development.
Thanks, Tom. If there's no other questions from the board or professionals, this is a public hearing, so what we like to do with public hearings is make sure that we can capture all of your comments, anybody who would like to speak tonight. And the way we do that is we'll have you come on up, we'll take a minute, we'll give you some time if you'd like to come up and speak, or ask questions about the application of the board. We have a sign-up sheet right here on the corner of the table, you can come on up and sign in. The first person who signs in can come to the podium, and everybody else will call you in the order that you sign in, so we can keep track of you for the minutes and make sure we capture all of your comments and feedback on the plan. So is there anybody who would like to speak or ask questions? You can come on up, and you can sign in. And again, the first person who signs in, if you want to come right to the podium, that would be great. You can come right to the podium there where the gentleman was speaking? Yep. And you can just announce your name for the minutes, if you don't mind, and then you can ask your question. You've got a mic in front of you, just so that we can pick up the sound.
Are you taking minutes?
Yep.
William G. Two questions for Scenic Hudson. One is, how many acres is that map? I don't quite see so well, and that all just looks like scratch to me, so that's the first thing.
The whole property is 330 acres. This is that property? Because it didn't look like the one that I got. I went up to Dutch's Canafang to remove the mosses.
So, I'm sorry, just say by the mic for us, because we try to pick up your comments.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought I was talking about nothing.
That's all right.
So, is there missing stuff, or is that the 330?
That's the 330.
Okay.
Yeah, the parcel lot just mapped this up there.
Okay, okay. That's the first question. The second question is, what sort of access are you going to grant to the general population? Meaning, I live there, practically adjacent to this, so if I walk up into the woods, am I going to get an N-con die with a gun telling me, "Get out of these woods, they're owned by Scenic Hudson"? Because that happens sometimes, not necessarily the Scenic Hudson part. Those are my only two questions.
Well, I think we have a hand mic, we can have you use the hand mic to answer questions if you want.
Okay, thank you. Generally speaking, Scenic Hudson lands are open to the public unless we have to close them for various safety or ecological reasons, but yes, typically speaking, our, you know, lands that we acquire are open for public access.
So we just, we need to capture everybody's comments, so if you can just hand them over to the podium.
Yes, so, yeah, okay, thank you. You know, to clarify, so we've got two lots here, Lot 1 and Lot 2. So Lot 1 would be the one that we would be leasing to Fishkill Farms, and Lot 2 is the one, or, I'm sorry, thank you. Lot 2 is the one that we're leasing to, would be leasing to Fishkill Farms, and Lot 1 is the one that Scenic Hudson would be retaining. And as of right now, the, you know, with Lot 1, we, that would be when we, at the time that we take ownership, we would, we would probably, we would plan to let that be open unless there was some reason, like safety-wise or construction or other things that, you know, we had to do. But, but yeah, that, you know, if people want, there's some really beautiful stuff there, so yeah.
Did you have any other questions before we move to the next?
I think that answered it.
Okay.
You're not going to kill the eagles out there, are you? There's all the eagles, at least one that lives there. At least I've seen them on a number of occasions.
That's a nesting pair, right on top of one.
What's that?
There's a nesting pair right in the wake of the ash.
Right, yeah. I thought you were going to find them.
Who's our next name on the list?
Gerald Carey.
Great.
My name is Gerald Carey, I live at, on Tamarack Drive, across the pond from the subject property, and I'm very much in favor of this proposal. I think that the southwest portion of East Fishkill has been overdeveloped to begin with. I'm familiar with the property, I've walked it a few times, my kids have played on it a number of times, and I just think that Lot Number 1, from what I could see, is probably really undevelopable at this point in time, so, and I'm very much in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is our next speaker? You can come up.
My name is Adelie Lewis, and I'm concerned about the future of the piece of property that Scenic Hudson is, will be retaining ownership of in this proposal. Has Scenic Hudson ever sold any of the property that it has acquired through the years, and then that property was developed? You know, is there any way that this can, you can promise that it will be held in its natural shape in perpetuity? Or is this something that we may have to worry about in five years or seven years if you decide, if you find a buyer for this piece of property who might want to come in and do something more with it?
Well, I think that you couldn't find a buyer that would be more likely to preserve the property than Scenic Hudson, is, I think, the answer to that. I mean, you know, the property is going to be owned, it may be ultimately conveyed to a private party, you know, I can't promise that that won't happen.
Yeah, if you would say that wouldn't happen, it would make me feel a lot better.
I understand that, but this is property, but as Mike indicated, this is their mission, and I think that, you know, their purpose in life, they're a land trust.
As long as you hold on to it, I have no worries about it, it's what might happen after that. And I, you know, have you ever sold a piece of property to someone who then developed it?
Right, I guess I, you know, I'm, I'd have to think about that for a while. We have sold property before, and as I've noted, you know, a possibility for this particular property, you know, could include in the future, conveyance to a private property, a private party, subject to a conservation easement.
Well, is a conservation easement going to be put on the entire piece of property, or is that going to be, you know, so many feet on either side of Wiccopy Creek or whatever? Or is the entire piece of property going to be held for conservation? You know, I'm one of these people who, they've built my house, now I don't want any other houses.
I'm sorry?
Well, perhaps I could just add a little something. Scenic Hudson's preserving it, but your concern isn't a future. If there were any change, whoever wanted to develop it would have to come back.
That's right.
And this property, as I think one of the neighbors already pointed out, is very environmentally sensitive, so aside from just deciding where a road would go, et cetera, they would have to do an analysis of the wetlands, the steep slopes. We now have, only 12 years ago, the town enacted steep slopes protection, which protects the hillsides from devastation and taking down of the trees on them. So there are a lot of other safeguards that probably would render this property pretty much undevelopable.
Okay, I won't keep beating this horse. I've made, you know, I've made the point I wanted to make.
Yes, but it would be advertised, and the signs would be posted, so.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Eileen Segnet, I live on 20 Baroque, and we are directly affected by this proposal that seems to be open-ended and with no guarantee that our property remains as it is. It is undevelopable, I can tell you. We had loggers up there a couple of years ago, and they devastated the place just using an old logging road. It is impossible for anyone to build up there. You shouldn't. It's not only the wildlife, it's, it's, it's everything up there. And if you start having people coming in constantly, like if you open to the public and you put trails there, I can't see anything good coming from it. I adore the fact that Scenic Hudson wants it, but to have no guarantee that Scenic Hudson will keep it is very unsettling to most of us. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
I have a couple of concerns. I live on the Wiccopy House.
Sir, we just, we have to capture your voice for, yeah.
Sorry, Lot 1, Lot 1, where were you planning on accessing that from, East Hook Road? I was concerned with that. Do you have an answer for that?
Where is Lot 1 being accessed?
Lot 1, right now, the only usable access is, or only feasible access, I should say, would be off of East Hook Road.
Where?
There is a piece of property right here, it's parcel 640370, that is also being conveyed, it's also part of this application, it's not being subdivided, it's an existing lot that's being conveyed, and right now it comes up through here.
There's two nesting eagles right there, they're registered with the state right now, they're 50 feet from the property line.
Yeah.
So I'm just gonna, sorry.
There's, there's.
Hold on one minute, I just want to make sure we capture that.
It's supposed to be a 500-foot setback according to DEC on that.
Yeah, this whole area over here is, has so much wetlands and the same over here, that we had this discussion at the last meeting too, that it's really not a feasible way of access.
Also right here, there's a drainage ditch that was put in several years ago, because we have, we have massive flash flooding all the time. I had two feet of water in a barn a couple of years ago, which is the first time that's ever happened, I've been there for 22 years. I've cleaned up railroad ties, cut wood, toilet bowls off the lawn, tires.
Yeah.
It all comes out of that property like you wouldn't believe. And that river will change course again. It's changed over the last 22 years, it's changed several times.
Right. At this point, there's no proposal for improvements to that, or improving, you know, making a road or anything like that. If there was, if it was to come to that, the Scenic Hudson would, I mean, as per discussions at the last meeting, would essentially have to come back to the planning board and propose that. There's been some talk about that drainage ditch, as well that was put in there by the town. We're going to be granting, either we or Heritage Acre.
Well, I think the current owner is in discussions, I think, with the town attorney about addressing that, right, to try to put a.
Right, see the extent of it and what it does, yes.
Right, but there's intent to work with the town, I believe there's an intent to work with the town.
Maybe it would help is, if I say that no development is being proposed, and all of the issues that you raised are excellent issues, but in any process for development, if they ever want to build even one house and a lot, the town has a whole process. First of all, we can't, even if it's owned by Scenic Hudson, we can't override New York State DEC's control of wetlands and streams and water bodies. And if there's one that's smaller than one that's regulated by DEC, the town has now in, for the last 12 years, a very extensive wetlands law. So those issues and the boiled eagles and everything would be analyzed, and if it couldn't be developed because of that, it couldn't be developed. I mean, you know.
Okay, but Lot 2, I love that with Josh, I think that's great. That's good use of that property, it's, that's prime for what you're going to do with it, that's awesome. But the Lot 1, I'm a little concerned with as far as the flooding and access. I mean, East Hook Road doesn't even have double-yellow line down it, because it's not wide enough.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
So, you know, that's a DOT thing, so, I mean, that's a big concern of, I'm here on behalf of the owners, and plus I've lived there for 22 years. I've seen a lot of changes, so I guess that's it.
Thank you. Can I, can I just ask the applicant to come up to the podium for a second for me? With regard to the eagles, are you aware of those, and have you made provision on the plan to ensure that habitat?
No, this is, actually today is the first I heard about the eagles.
Okay. Okay. Is that something that you've dealt with before on other parcels, so you know what would be needed, or is that something we need to research?
In terms of, I mean, what, do you mean in terms of what is needed?
The comment from the gentleman in the audience was that there's a 500-foot setback required from a nesting pair, so.
There's no development proposed at this point.
Right, and as Tom noted, if we were.
Is there any, is there any reason based on that, I'm assuming it's a registration of the eagles that we have to place that on the plan, or is there anything we need to amassing?
Not at this point.
No.
Okay.
Because there's no development, so, until the development is proposed, then at that point, all those, this is just merely moving lot lines around.
No, I understand, but with a statement like that, this is the first time we've had that come up in front of this board, so I'm just asking whether there's something to do.
Well, I'm sure that helps Scenic Hudson even, although I don't think, I'm aware of any sale of property by Scenic Hudson, I'm sure maybe in some transaction there could have been, but I think having the eagles there probably renders it more under your auspices of preservation purposes than, if there, if you needed any, that would help.
Right, yeah, and all of these things would be factors in terms, if, you know, if we were considering conveying this to a private party, subject to conservation easement, of course, we would be back and make sure that we're, you know, protecting the eagle, protecting the stream, doing all the things that we need to do in terms of the community, in terms of the town, in terms of regulations, so that it's done in a way that's respectful to this property.
Thank you. Who's our, who's our next person? Michael? Do we have a Michael who wanted to speak? Okay, come on up. Thank you.
Hi, so, my name is Mike Brekia, I own property, I just, new to the area, and I just bought a home that's directly affected by Lot 1. So my backyard backs up directly to the property line there. So I can tell you that everyone in that subdivision, everyone in that neighborhood is very concerned about the development, because our backyards are just basically facing Lot 1. And so for the last few months, we've, you know, woken up to men kind of just walking through, laying survey, not really having much information for anybody, but just kind of in our backyards. So I guess my question is, when I look at the two divisions there, I can tell you some of the concerns from the people in the neighborhood are, as it pertains to Lot 2, we understand that's going to be leased to Fishkill Farms for development. How do, how does the use of pesticides on Lot 2, will that affect the surrounding homes? Two, when it comes to Lot 1, and Scenic Hudson's involvement in developing, you know, whatever it may be, a park, I don't think we've actually heard what you plan to do in that area besides just give access to people. So what are those exact plans, and how close to the property line are you planning to develop any sort of trails or parkways? So in other words, will I continue to wake up in my backyard and see people just kind of walking around, and, you know, that type of thing? Because we all have children, that entire street has a bunch of young children, so certainly the farmland, while it sounds great, is a concern, because we don't know what you use there, how that affects the land that surrounds it. And so any clarity on what you guys plan to do with Lot 1, specifically, besides just saying we have public access? And then I guess to the other question I asked before was, who currently owns it? Who are you buying it from? And while you can't, you know, speak to the fact that you've never, you know, sold that property, or have sold property that was further developed into some sort of housing area, I mean, what, if you were to, if I understand what you were saying right in the beginning, is that any sort of sale of that property, you would be focused on making sure that it was preserved, and how so? You know, so those are just a bunch of questions that I think the people in the surrounding area really have.
Okay, thank you. So can I, I'm going to have, I'm sorry, hold on one minute. Can I have the applicant, come on up to the podium, because there's a couple of questions there, I want to make sure, we'll go through all of them, and then we'll have you come back up, sir, if you have any additional questions. I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead.
So if I miss anything, please let me know, there's a lot of questions there. So the owner currently is Heritage Acre LLC, and that's part of the Morgenthau family, you know, so this is, what we're acquiring from them is all of the land that they own, is this subdivision, and the subdivision actually includes a merger of a little parcel at the very top of, I always get those confused.
I want to clarify, this is, these are descendants of the family that originally farmed here.
Yes.
So they're, they have, you know, an entity, but this is that family. So they're, you know, they're proposing to convey it for these purposes, just to be clear.
Right, thank you. In terms of, you know, our plans for Lot 1, this is something, again, we don't have concrete plans right now, but anything that we would do, we would come, we would come back here, we would come to the community, because we don't want to do things, we don't want to have a situation where, you know, like you were saying, you're worried, you know, you've got concerns about, like, people hiking right in your backyard or something. We want to do something that's respectful of everybody around this property, and, you know, in. And, you know, if, for example, public access, if we were going to develop a trail system and have a parking area, you know, we would come back here to get the approvals from the parking. We'd come back here to, you know, to show the trail plan. We want to make sure that this is done in a way that's respectful to everybody, because, you know, we're not, Sinek Hudson wants to work with communities. We don't want to, you know, surprise people with something. It's just, right now, we're doing this transaction, we don't have concrete plans, but, you know, there's a couple of options on the table. Any of those options that we do, we would come back, and in terms of development, the same thing. We would make sure that we're doing it in a way that's respectful of all this conservation values that we've talked about, and respectful of neighbors, so that, you know, you're not looking, you're not staring at something that just is completely out of character of what you've been able to enjoy all this time from your properties.
Can I answer the microphone for a second?
So, sir, we'll have you come up to the podium when you have additional comments.
People are saying, well, I've heard a couple of people say they don't want it opened up for trails, but I mean, that's really part and parcel to Sinek Hudson's mission, is to have lands that are accessible for public use, correct?
Yeah.
So, I mean, that is a reasonable expectation, and I think, given the development options and everything else, I think you can agree that some kind of, you know, walking trails or something that, again, as Sinek Hudson has stated, that will be developed in appreciation of the neighborhood and that kind of thing. I mean, if...
One of the things that will be the purview of the planning board, though, is as those are developed, we can, we can see where there might be residential houses and request setbacks and things for any trails that might be placed on the land, to keep them out of sight or to keep them away from where there might be vehicles or children and bicycles or something like that. So, you know, that's all to come.
Understand. You know, this is not going to be a forever wild that's locked away. I mean, that's not Sinek Hudson's mission, so.
And, you know, I would certainly invite anybody to visit any of our other parks to see how we've designed the, those, the trail systems there. And all of our parks are next to, you know, oftentimes are next to other housing developments, and we make sure to design those in ways that are respectful of private property as well.
They do back up to other...
Yeah, we have, we have numerous parks that back up to housing.
Is there a, I'm sorry, we're going to make sure everybody's, whoever's at the podium will be the speaker. Is there a, I'm assuming you have a website or something that would show folks if they want to go see some of your other places?
Yeah, our website...
Do you have any that you recommend for the folks in the audience who want to see that?
Our website is sinekhusson.org, and definitely would encourage everybody to visit it and learn more about who we are and what we do.
Are there copies of this map available to public?
We have copies of the plans in our planning office here in the town, yes. And any plan you see before the planning board, you can always find copies of it in the planning office.
Thank you.
Sure.
Sure.
So the one thing I don't think we heard you address, it was the farming aspect of the property, and you had asked the question about whether there would be pesticides used on the site, so...
There you go, you're good.
Come on up to the podium, if you don't mind, and just give us your name for the minutes. Thank you.
So I'm Josh Morgenthau, I'm the owner of Fishkill Farms. I mean, I think the first thing that I want to say is, just to let everyone know that my family and I'm committed to farming and to keeping the land open, and I share all the concerns that I've heard, and really that's why I think this is an important transaction to make happen. I never expected, this was land that was owned by my grandfather, and I never expected to have the opportunity to be able to place some of it back into farmland. And, you know, my cousins own it now, my aunt had owned it previously before she passed away, and now that it's, belongs to my cousins, they're really eager to sell. And so, I mean, the one thing I would emphasize is just that I share everyone's concerns, but my fear is that if we don't take this up, we have Sinek Hudson, which is a great partner and potential steward of this land, and if we don't take that opportunity, that we could be looking at something much worse. And so that's the first thing I'd say. In terms of the agricultural production, you know, we're a commercial farm, we have to grow a good crop, but we're really committed to farming sustainably. About half of, more than half of our acreage is certified organic, and the remainder is eco-certified, so it means that there, so the worst, the pesticides that are really toxic are on our do-not-use list. So, I mean, we, we take stewardship of the land and using safe, you know, pest management options really seriously, and that's, that's really what we're about. And, you know, I think there, you know, there's, there's going to be trade-offs living next to a farm, but ultimately the open space and the value of having a farm in your community is, you know, outweighs that.
Well, what do you think trade-offs are for people who live back to it?
Well, I mean, I, you know, we're, we're in agricultural production, we do have to, even our organic blocks have to be sprayed with organic pesticides, and that can be noisy. But, you know, I...
So noise is...
Yeah, I mean, we're, you know, we're in, in production, we have to, sometimes it's going to rain, and you have to get out there and spray, spray the crop. But, you know, ultimately, the goal for us is to produce organic and sustainable food and serve the local community and keep the land open.
Thank you.
I'm just going to add two things to that. As the surveyor on the project, if any of my field crews out there, they should have been able to identify themselves to you, that surveyors, usually they don't, they don't always know the details of what they're doing out there, and we just tell them sometimes, you know, go out and run this boundary line for us. So they don't know exactly what they're doing it for, they just know they have to find a boundary line. But I hope they were respectful, and if anyone came up to...
They were respectful, but I would say they didn't know more.
Yeah, okay, yeah. That's not all that, because they don't always know everything. And then just a comment on the trails thing. Outside of surveying, I'm also an avid mountain biker, and I've actually worked with Sinek Hudson on trail access projects and some other parks of theirs up in Ulster County. And I can tell you that the review process to put trails in through Sinek Hudson involves the community, and it can be relatively restrictive in, you know, in terms of staying away from housing and things like that, just from, again, my experience of actually working on trail projects with Sinek Hudson from the mountain biker perspective, so.
Thank you. Did we answer your questions? Did you have any follow-up questions?
We do, but I think I might have had one follow-up question.
So I'm going to have you just come on up to the mic so we can, we know we can hear you, but the problem is that we're recording the meeting.
Yeah, so I think I do have one follow-up question for, I'm sorry, I missed your, your name. Yeah, Mike, oh, okay. So, part of what you said was that you're, you're looking to buy this land to preserve it, but that you don't have any plans necessarily for it. But then you said that there are a couple of options that are on the table. So what are those options? I mean, why, I don't, I don't know anybody that buys 300 acres of land without a plan, right? So that doesn't make much sense to me. So if maybe you could elaborate on that, that would be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think, just to clarify what we've said before, you know, the reason that we're acquiring this property now today is to acquire it to, to put it back into farming. And so we identify the part of the property which is most beneficial for farming, based on the soils and working with the farmer that's interested in doing that. So that's really what's pushing us to do it right now. We also identified the property because it has important habitat characteristics, and apparently we, we picked a good parcel, right, because you found some eagles out there. But there are a lot of wetlands, there are other reasons why they're interested in the property. They buy property because of the character of the property. So they don't always have, I mean, they don't always know exactly what they're going to do with it. They, they sometimes, you know, might hold it in open space, they might develop trails, but they don't have a particular plan for that right now because the precipitating event right now is buying it to preserve the farm, to facilitate that farm. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, well, I mean, there's no farm there now, right, so there's not preserving the farm.
Well, to, I'm sorry, to restore the farm, because it used to be a farm, right? So it's going to...
How long ago?
Uh, how long ago, do you know?
Yeah.
I mean, a long time ago. It's all grown over, right?
Twenty years.
Right. But again, restoring the land to farms is one of the things they've tried to do.
Thank you. We, you can come on up, we can sign in. We've got folks who've signed in. And who's our, who's our next person? You're good? I'm assuming you're...
I'm Oliver.
Okay.
I'm Fred Simone, 131 East Hook Road. I'm rising in support for this project. I'd like to make sure that it doesn't get developed into housing and whatnot. I've known the Morgenthau family my whole life, and I know the farm. I grew up in the house at, by the crossroad there, right next to the graveyard. And it's, it's been great. So my only concern, and I, maybe Josh can answer the question, there's an existing farm road that cuts, like, pretty close to the back corner of my property. And I assume you're going to be using that for access for the farm, and is, what chances are there that we're going to, you're going to be using that for, like, the pick-your-own thing, and I'm going to end up with, you know, the traffic that you have on, on the other, the farm, you know, coming right by my house and whatnot. Maybe you could address that, Josh. Other than that, I'm all for it, and, you know, he does a great job, and you really did well over there, and I assume you're going to do just as well on the new piece. So, and I'd like to see it come back to be a farm also. I miss it.
Thank you. You can come on up, Josh.
So, yeah, right now, the only plan that we'd have for the property is, is farming. We're not, we have all of our infrastructure for pick-your-own on our, on our home farm, and, you know, we'd be entering a long-term lease with, with Sinek Hudson. So we wouldn't, I don't think it would make sense for us to, to use that for, for pick-your-own. It would be really for agricultural production, and, you know, that's, we, it's early enough in this process that we haven't, we don't have a crop plan, you know, set for the land, but that's, that's the intention.
Thank you. Did you have any other questions?
Well, it's still about the roadway. You know, what if you do change use and, you know, you, you know, you have the corn maze or buses and all that, I mean, the, you know, the road you have on the other place, it's, you know, a good-sized road, and there's, there is a lot of traffic on it, you know, in, in season. And, you know, what kind of guarantees are that that's not going to happen right by my house? Are there any guarantees?
I know you said you don't have a crop plan yet, so I'm assuming you don't have a...
I mean, I suppose not, but like I said, it doesn't really make, make sense to use that piece of land for that purpose. I think the alternative is, you know, for looking at another buyer, housing development, and a lot more traffic that's year-round and not potentially seasonal. But there, as part of the conservation easement that, that Sinek Hudson would be placing on the land, there are restrictions to what can be built, and, you know, all, I think, you know, Mike could, could talk more about it, but those, those restrictions are geared towards keeping it primarily open space and farmland and not, you know, developed.
I guess other than that, I'm all for the proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Josh.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you, Josh.
Gene Branson?
Gene?
Hi, my name is Gene Branson. I live at Two Macy Court. I'm probably the closest to the farm, so I get the most effect. I just want to say I've had a lot of concerns in the past with Josh and his spraying and all, and he's been very, very concerned from my behalf, and he's made arrangements, adjustments to his spraying times and all. I've been a real thorn in his side, which I'm sorry for, but I think it's a great idea that they, we go ahead and go forward with this. A little concern on the taxes, what's going to happen with the taxes if it's, goes to Sinek Hudson. But people's concerns with people walking into woods or whatever, I think you ought to think more on what happens if we have 300 homes in there, 330 acres, we could have an awful lot of homes in there. There'd be a lot more foot traffic, houses, traffic in the road. It's overwhelming there now, between a Hickman farm that was sold years ago, the traffic in the homes are uncontrollable. And I think you ought to be more concerned about, all right, you got a few people walking into woods or something, I think that's a great idea. You know, I really do. The eagles would be great. I mean, Sinek Hudson does a lot for the community. I think that'd be a fantastic thing to have them in the area, less than homes. We have West Hook Santa Gravel, and in no time at all, that's going to be developed, and that's a concern of mine. And where's that, there's going to be a ton of homes going over there. So I think you ought to be more addressed on, on the concern of the farm, and I think it's great to have a farm in the area and keep that going. So thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Sorry, it was a little late this evening, but I just want to ask a question because I missed the first part. So, they want, that lot one is really right behind your house and so forth?
Just behind all the homes right there, yes.
Right, from, on your side of the street, right?
Sir, we, we can't hear you. If you can speak into the mic.
Okay, I got a beautiful voice, so don't worry. The lot one, the lot one is right behind your, your two, your two houses, right? So that's the part that they want to make the, a trail or whatever. My concern with a trail, and I lived, and I lived in a neighborhood for 14 years, and I'm the last house in the cul-de-sac to the left, 149 Logan's Way, is, is with trails and everything, as you guys know, the biggest epidemic going around is heroin and drugs and everything like that. And a lot of times, these trails and, and parks and everything are a haven for them. And myself personally, I found a needle down in the park right down the street, in the kids' park. So those kind of areas, like, they're going to be backing up to my house now, and, you know, people walking around is a concern, because I'm a capitalist, so, like, I'm not hung up on having 300 houses or whatever, because it'll keep your taxes down and so forth, and it'd actually be more safe than having people hiking strangers coming and doing drugs and walking around in our backyards. So it's, you know, that's what concerns me. We all have little kids on the street, like you said, and, and I just think that, and as far as like the pesticides and everything that you mentioned, you know, my father was a farmer too, and, and, you know, just like in anything in life, you could eat something, you could drink something, it could cause cancer or whatever, you can never guarantee that something's not going to do something. So just to me, like, my biggest concern is not even the houses, is, like I said, is the drugs and stuff that I've seen, I've witnessed firsthand. And having people, I'd rather have 300 houses where you know, you can know your neighbors and know it's protected, than having 300 strangers walking your back rob, your backyard and rob your house, or, or take your children or do something like that. So that's all really I want to say. So thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Leonard Scafidi. I live on Laurel Lane off of East Hook Road. My biggest concern is what that man just said about the drugs and the people, because I learned from living when I lived in Mayapack, and they had the bicycle path. And they said, "Don't worry about everything, everything's going to be fine." They butted up against people's houses, and people were losing bicycles, toys, and robberies, besides the drugs they were doing on the bicycle path. I believe the bicycle path is the worst thing they ever decided to do, especially behind private houses. I don't mind the farm, I don't mind a few houses, but I'm well against the bicycle path to see how much damage it does to the community. And plus, once it's all finished, who's going to pay for it to keep it clean? The maintenance, the police department, it's all on our shoulders. Once they finish it, it's all ours, and we got to maintain it and pay for it. That's what I have to say. But a good thing to have a farm. Thank you.
Thank you. If we can just, hold on one, you can come up, that's fine. Can I just ask the applicant, as far as the maintenance of trails and things like that, do you, is that something you typically turn over to the community, or does Sinek Hudson maintain those?
For the properties that we own, Sinek Hudson typically does the trail maintenance ourselves.
Okay.
But the town has to accept it.
Right, I mean, in terms of...
Usually, just, so just, I don't want to create undue fear, but first of all, Sinek Hudson's property is usually developed...
But first of all, Sinek Hudson's property is usually developed with walking trails that are very rustic, they're not paved, there's not pavement or anything, at least the ones that I'm aware of. Secondly, if you're gonna have a trail system, you're gonna ask the town to take it over, maintain it, the town board would have to consent, and that would involve community input. And obviously, that consent comes with input into where they would be and where they're moved away from, et cetera. So just want to get that on the record.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. I'm sorry, sir, come on up.
Hi, Eric Branigan. I've lived on Tamarack for about 26 years now, so that's right in my backyard. And I just want to make sure that I understand the map as far as what Fishkill Farms is gonna own and Sinek Hudson's gonna own, as far as behind Tamarack going up towards Baroque goes.
Is that something you can show, yeah, if you can show them on the map?
It's easiest to show on the map. I try to speak loudly so my people can hear.
Do we have the hand mic for you? Yeah, thank you.
The parcel Lot 2, right here, this section right here, this is going to be leased to Fishkill Farms. And this portion right through here and wrapping around over here.
So I'm sorry, hold on one. Do you know where your house is in relation to this?
That's why I asked, I'm Tamarack.
You're Tamarack. Tamarack is right here.
So that is part of Lot 1?
What is your last name?
Branigan.
Branigan.
And you can go closer to the map if you want to see?
There you are. So you will be, you're right here on the map? So you will be Lot 2 right here?
Or Lot 2, which will be Fishkill Farm.
Which will be the farm parcel, yes.
Now, another question is, I've grown up back there. I've been there since I was a kid, going there. I plan on taking over the house soon and having my kids. Will that still be, will I still have access to that? Or now that it goes to Fishkill Farms, I won't be allowed to be on that property?
Right, so Lot 2, which would be leasing to Fishkill Farms, that would be, that would not be open for public access.
Would not be open, okay.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else on the...
Thank you. My name is Rob Curley. Just a couple of quick questions. And I agree with the farm. I think, Josh, you do great things there. We've been CSA members for a long time. It's great what you do. You talked about a long-term lease. How long is it, like a 100-year lease? Is this like a commitment we're making to you? Or is this kind of like, you know, 10-year lease, and in 10 years, we're having this conversation again? What's the difference?
It would be a nine-year lease, but the goal would be that we would purchase the property at the end, that lot at the end of the lease.
Okay, so at least with option to buy at the end of that. Okay, which I assume you would do after putting nine years of work into that.
Exactly.
And then the second question I have is around the Lot 1. I know you continue to say there's no plans, there's some on the table, but nothing concrete as of now. I do agree, hiking trails would preserve the land more than some other options out there. The question was asked, why we couldn't have a conservational easement on it right now? So if you don't own the property now, couldn't a conservational easement be put on Lot 1 as you guys take it over as well? Couldn't both lots be under conservational easement?
Well, we're, the idea would be that we'd be acquiring it shortly after this, you know, we would be, after the subdivision, we would be acquiring the property, and we wouldn't have a conservation easement on ourselves. And, you know, during our ownership, we would manage it for the purposes and the values that I discussed before. And if, you know, again, if we were to consider selling this privately, then it would be made subject to a conservation easement.
And the current owner wouldn't put a conservation easement on it? I mean, the whole point of us buying it is because then we want to do these things to preserve the property, but the current owner has the property for sale.
Okay. So the current owner wouldn't put a conservation easement on it prior to you picking it up? But if you were to sell it, then you would put a conservation easement. And so the current buyer wouldn't do it because they believe your, I guess, statement that you have on your website, right?
No, the current, the current owner.
We just need you to have the mic, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. The current owner is just an owner of property, just like anybody else who owns a large tract of property.
Right. But if they truly wanted the property protected, they could put a conservation easement on it.
So could you if you had a big piece of property, but that's not what they're proposing?
Restrict yourself.
I guess, my question is, why wouldn't, why wouldn't we want to put one on there now? Because you don't have to hold your own conservation easement. Couldn't another, couldn't another entity hold a conservation easement?
I don't think the town can require an owner to put a conservation easement on their own property. The current owner, you mean?
I don't think they could, they could do it. But if in good faith, you said that is what we truly want to do, and it's not to sell it for development, why would you be opposed to putting conservation easement on the property?
But when we buy it, it will be Sinek Hudson that owns the property. We are a land trust organization.
Right.
That's our purpose for owning the property.
And you're the only land trust organization within Dutchess that can hold a conservation easement?
No, that's not what I mean. But our, you know, our mission and our purposes, Mike indicated at the beginning, I don't know if you were here at the beginning.
I was.
Is to, is to hold property and, you know, and preserve it. It is not to, you know, create 300 units of housing. That's not their mission and purpose.
The current owner wouldn't do that because that would limit the options as to who would be able to buy it.
Right.
Because, you know, if they put that easement on it, they couldn't sell it to a developer to put 200 houses on it.
But it's been mentioned a few times that it's probably not a very developable piece of property, right? So if that person wants to make it...
Parts of it are.
Lot 1 is not a lot.
Parts of it are.
So Lot 1 is not developable. So that's the one that I'm actually saying that would be the one that's not gonna have a conservation easement on it until there is the potential sale to a private buyer, right? So if it's not developable, why would the current owner, or why would the town, or why would anybody not want to put a conservation easement on that lot to say, "We're actually gonna preserve it as much as possible so it can't be developed for homes, it can't be developed for parking lots or anything else?"
Well, part of it is, as a private property owner, they would like to get some remuneration for it. So Sinek Hudson is going to purchase it from them for whatever the value is of the land. Sinek Hudson's incorporated mission in all their 20, 25, 30 years that during existence is to acquire property to preserve it. So a regular, I think, a non-Sinek Hudson would probably not want to buy the property because of its development potential. But they want to buy it because of the preservation for the eagles and everything we're talking about.
And I think that's a great thing, yeah.
Right. And part of the problem is there's some legal reasons why a property owner doesn't have a conservation easement held by themselves on a property. Because if you're the owner, the easement merges, I don't want to get into, so...
But it restricts what they can be done with the property.
Right. And Sinek Hudson, and I have no idea, but sometimes maybe they would find another group that would like to purchase it for conservation purposes.
Right.
And then that group may have certain goals, like it may be, I don't know, the Open Space Institute or something like that, which may have different conservation goals. So they would work the easement around the conservation practices of that group.
Okay. And there's nothing that goes from the town's point of view that says, "At the time of sale of this property, it would have to have a conservation easement"?
No, because quite frankly, if the property owner came in and wanted to do this subdivision, all we're doing is creating lot lines.
Right, right.
There's no approval for building, development, et cetera. So if the property owner came in without Sinek Hudson being involved, they would more or less be entitled to change the lot lines. I mean, the town has to ensure there's access to the lots, which we have. But there's no development proposed. So if a property owner wants to have it segregated a little differently than what it was, that's their right.
Right, okay. But there's nothing that would, that guarantees that there would be a conservation easement on Lot 1 at the time of sale? It's just, that's what we say we're gonna do?
There's Lot 1 in the farm, I'm confused. There's Lot, no, Lot 1 is just being...
That's just, we're telling you we're gonna do it. And in good faith, we're hoping that they follow through with that.
Correct.
If and when there is a...
If not, whoever buys, who wants to do something, has to be back here and hear all the concerns and see if it fits into the law and all the protections that property has.
I want to reiterate that regardless of who the buyer is, if somebody's gonna actually develop either parcel, it has to come back before us. Anybody who received notice before this public hearing would receive notice again that someone's trying to build something on the property. And that's regardless of whether it's Sinek Hudson or anyone else. It wouldn't happen without the public being noticed.
All clear. And I appreciate everything and questions, and thank you for the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have, you can come on back up, sir?
All right, I'm back again. I got a question for Sinek Hudson. Where's their funding coming from to do all this work? To put all these paths in? Does it come out of our transportation money?
No.
That's what I heard, it was in Mayapack.
Sinek Hudson's a, we receive funds from all sorts of sources, but we're not...
You don't get nothing from the state to give you any money to do any of this.
Could you let the man answer, please?
Well, I think you're talking about the rail trail development.
That's right, yeah.
And that was funded by the federal government through grants. Sinek Hudson's funding is primarily private. Okay, I've dealt with them on a couple of other, not representing the town and other communities. And sometimes they do get state grants for a particular acquisition.
True, but it doesn't come out of...
The other town I worked in developed a 383-acre site that was ready for 295 condominiums.
Right.
And with a partnership of Sinek Hudson, New York State, Westchester County, and the town, they acquired the property. Sinek Hudson ultimately held the easement on it because their share was sold to the state, who in turn turned it over to the town. So there's a lot of different funding mechanisms.
But it doesn't come out of transportation where our roads or anything like that?
I don't believe this project was fit for that. The rail trails, just like Aaron and Button, that's all, yes.
And they wind up getting stuck with the bill after it was all finished. That's what I'm asking. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who's signed up? Paul?
Paul Klumpko. I've lived on Baroque Drive for 30 years now. I just want to say, we're in a position now where we have somebody that owns the land that can do anything they want with it as long as it goes through this board. And we're in the process of looking at a sale to a group that wants to preserve the land in open spaces. I think most people here would want somebody that wants to preserve open spaces and has a track history, a track record of preserving open spaces. I've been to Sinek Hudson hiking paths, and I walk them myself just to get out and into the country. I think it'd be a really good thing. I understand people might be concerned about drugs, but I don't know of anybody that wants to walk three miles over a rough path into the forest to use drugs because it's just too hard to do.
Well, but it's a hiding place.
It's a hiding place, but it's, you have to travel to get there, and then you gotta walk in. I mean, do you... People that are on drugs don't want to do that. I mean, people that are selling drugs might want to do it, but they could do it now. They don't need this to be in Sinek Hudson's possession to do it. They can just go walk in anytime they want.
They can sell, they can walk in and do whatever they want.
They could do, they could do that now though, too, right?
I mean, I just think we have, we have a good intention here, and I think, I'm happy with it. And at least we have the protection of somebody that has a history of doing good things with the land. And I'm glad to see it happen compared to what could happen.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have anyone else on our list? Is there anyone else who'd like to offer, you can come on back up, that's fine. Just remind us of your name so we capture.
Eric Branigan. Just wanted to ask one more question. I don't know if it's something that you can answer. From my lot to, from my house through Lot 2 to Lot 1, what is the amount of acreage that that is? Branigan?
Do you mean the acreage, the distance from here down here?
Yeah, from here to here, and that section.
What I'm wondering is if they were to sell off that second part, if I would be able to, if the houses are gonna, how far those houses would be if they were ever to build back there?
From your, from your house right now, you're probably about 500, 600 feet, maybe a little more. Do you need any help?
Okay.
From there?
All right. Thank you guys very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who would like to offer comment? Come on up. If you haven't signed in, we'll just have you, we need to capture your name on our, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Doyle. I'm the farm manager at Fishkill Farms, and I appreciate the opportunity not only to speak to you this evening, but most importantly, to deliberate on this incredible opportunity to put together what is a very historical piece of land and farm. I have farmed in Dutchess County since 1989 and have been during that time quite involved with land conservation because as a farmer, that is my passion. I can't abide seeing great, perfect farmland being developed unnecessarily with houses. And so have worked for a long time with Sinek Hudson, but also more particularly with Dutchess Land Conservancy. And know well the process of negotiating with landowners, which is very difficult and fraught with technicalities. But eventually, being able to place a long-term or in perpetuity conservation easement, which I don't think these, I'm gonna say it in slightly different words. A conservation easement is the technical term. But what that does is it removes in perpetuity the development rights from the property. So if we look at land having two forms of rights, the ownership being one in general terms and the ability to develop and build houses the other. And so conservation easement is doing that. And so preserving the land in perpetuity for the opportunity to farm. Hopefully, that will be the case. If it, in 200 years, is not actually an active farm, at least it will be open space and be able to be farmed in the future. So I could not be more in favor. Obviously, this is, this is the farm that we've farmed. I farmed with Josh for 10 years and am delighted to have this opportunity to bring this land back into the family. It's really wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to offer comment or ask questions? Okay. Michelle, we asked for questions and comments from the board and professionals at the beginning. Is there anything you wanted to add or say with this one?
Nope.
I think we've covered it. I think we've answered the questions that have been, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I just want to say, I just want to kind of clarify my understanding.
Sure.
Obviously, I hear concern that there's promises with nothing being documented. But my understanding is there's basically two levels of protection. One is the commitment and mission of Sinek Hudson to keep it undeveloped. And then second, if they were to sell it at any point in the future, it would have to come before the town, the town planning board again, for us to redeliberate the potential development.
Well, the sale wouldn't trigger coming before the planning board. Anybody who wanted to develop or change the property would need to come before the planning board. You could sell it, as long as it was gonna stay exactly as it is, there wouldn't be a need for a planning process.
So while there's nothing documenting saying that absolutely there will be a conservation easement in the future, there's two strong point, checkpoints to ensure that happens.
And by the way, there's no promise that when people come in and show us a diagram that has two houses on it, that they're gonna build those two houses either. It's saying, "This is the plan I plan to execute," and that's what they're getting the blessing to go do. So, you know, that's what they're telling us they're gonna do. We expect them to do it.
You can come back up, sure.
Are there any current restrictions on either of those pieces of properties when it comes to building? I know they had talked about farm, okay, so what, maybe just...
Well, it is the regular zoning on this. You can only have X number of lots per usable acre. And we have a lot count formula, so you have to subtract out if there's slopes in excess of 30% and wetlands and everything, and that reduces the number. You have to stay away from wetlands, there's 100-foot buffers, you can't build on slopes. So there's all kinds of other regulations.
So it sounds like there's a lot, and specifically Lot 1, that would be not buildable to those restrictions? Even though we've heard, you know, somebody could come out and build 300?
I don't want to say not buildable. I don't think anybody's actually studied to see whether you could fit two or three or five houses on that parcel because no one's intending to do that right now. But what we're saying is, and we have a phrase that you'll see, environmentally sensitive land, so the slopes that Tom's referencing, the wetlands and the buffer areas, all have to come, can't be built on. So you would look at the parcel, and you would literally have to line out and hatch it and subtract all of that out before you looked at, is this even developable? And can you access the land in a way that's still out of it?
So we don't know if that, either of those lots, if there's like a number, like that lot could only be...
No, because it's never been proposed.
Because it's never been brought up. So why would you spend the time? Okay.
Did you want to come back up, Josh?
I don't want to sound like a broken record, but it, my cousins are absolutely itching to sell this property. The taxes are really high. And I can guarantee you, anyone who's in favor of keeping this from being turned into a multi-house development should be in support of this deal because it's not, not gonna come along a second time. We were really lucky to have Sinek Hudson interested in buying this. And the next potential buyer, if this isn't approved, is not gonna be, not gonna have the interest of keeping the land open.
Have you had other offers on the land besides Sinek Hudson? It's not my land.
It's not his property.
It's my cousin's.
Your cousin, up here, is the family here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does anyone know, has there been other offers on the land?
No, that wouldn't be part of the planning board's purview. Right. So, I'm sorry, Michelle, I was just going to, I'm sorry, any other questions or comments from planning board members? Okay. So, Michelle, I think we've answered the majority of the questions this evening. We haven't heard anything that would stop. And again, this is a lot, technical, lot line realignment, so creating the lots as the applicant has proposed. Is there any, any reason that you have that we wouldn't be able to close the public hearing tonight? Okay. Does the board have any additional questions and does anyone from the public want to have, have any additional comments or questions? You can come back up, sure.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm fully in support of them going in progress with this. As being there for 26 years, like I said, I've grown up going to the farm and to have it in you guys' hands opposed to somebody else, I would much, I'm very for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, do I have, and actually, I'm sorry, let me have the applicant come on back up if you don't mind, to the podium for us. Okay. So typically what we would do is, the questions have been answered, there's been no concern raised around the way, the, again, lot, lot boundaries have been drawn. So normally we would close the public hearing, put this on for decision at our next meeting, which would be January 16th, where the planning board would have a resolution to be able to approve or decision the application.
Okay, so is this not a chance of approval this evening or we'd have to wait till the next meeting?
We would, we would need a resolution, Tom, I guess I'll, I don't think there's a resolution that we would know without having heard the public comment.
The custom is, it goes at the next meeting for a resolution to be considered by the board.
And again, we need to hear the public comment first so that we understand whether there's any additional restrictions or anything like that that may need to be placed in a resolution. So we wouldn't have one at the meeting.
Okay.
Okay. So do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you to everybody who made comments today.
And again, we'll have this on for decision on January 16th.
Really? My wife.
There is, yes.
Paul.
Thank you.
His siblings are in his 60s and second. And he's about- Yeah, I'm going to bring it on here. So just because-
All right. So, so folks?
Folks, we have other items on our agenda tonight, so we do need, if you're leaving, folks, we need, if you're leaving, we need to clear the room. We do have other items on our agenda tonight.
Okay.
How do I get a copy of this?
Of the scenic Hudson plan?
You'd have to come into the planning office. Likely what they'll probably do is take your license and have you go for a copy a second, maybe a copy of it.
Thank you.
Or you can just come in and look at it, but it might-
I live at the Wickaby House and the owner, he lives in California and I want to get him a copy.
There are items on our agenda tonight that we need to get to. If we could have folks that want to have discussion, please move out into the lobby.
Excuse me, gentlemen.
Josh, Josh, if you don't mind, we, we need to move on with our agenda. Can we have you? Thank you. I care.
Uh-oh. Good night.
Thank you.
I think we should test that.
Okay.
Nightclub swinging and it just makes for better TV.
The next item on our agenda is Kucherewski amended site plan on Clove Branch Road. And Michelle, can I trouble you to just pull the door closed once? I know we've got a lot of, thank you for waiting.
Thank you.
So if you want to just let us know where we are right now?
Well, I submitted answers to the questions and I hope they're satisfactory. And the town engineer requested more railing, which I contracted for.
Yeah, thank you.
And there is an issue with the generator. I had a site plan and it's on my property, but the fence is not on my property, so obviously I have to move the fence.
Okay. Do you have a way to fit the fence between your property line and the generator?
Well, what is the regulation call for in terms of setback from property lines for a generator?
Six-foot fence or four-foot?
It's a six-foot fence.
Six-foot is two feet.
Does the neighbor object to the fence? I mean-
No, it's really just, just, just a driveway.
It's not on his property, so, and it's not for our sake.
It's not for our sake. It's that street by-
I understand, but I mean, if the neighbor says, I kind of like the fence.
And then what happens if the next purchase of that property doesn't and this is part of his site plan? Yeah. So what I, I have a resolution I did with the condition, so he would, if you bought, adopted it-
I'm sorry.
It would allow the property owner to go forward. It's subject to three things, many of which I believe you already satisfied. One is board of health's confirmation. Second is the rail that the town engineer along the walkway. And then the third is to resolve the generator and fence situation to the satisfaction of the building department within 90 days.
Sure.
So, Michelle, I know you were going out to, to look at the generator and try to identify how, how much of a setback we have from the property line. Now we know the fence is not actually on the property line, so do we have any, do we know what needs to be done to correct the issue or are we, are we still trying to- Generator is, I think it's 1.2 feet off of the property line, I believe is what it was. So, and I, the only thing I'm not 100% certain on is it, there's, I think the parcel's a split zone, part of it's R3 and part of it's commercial, but I believe the generator falls within the commercial portion of the property, which means that there's no, you know, they can have basically up to a zero lot line. So I think in that case, we're, we'll be okay and we'll confirm that in the building department.
The tricky part is the fence though.
But, and then the fence has to, fences is basically buffering, the visual, visually buffering the generator. And the generator is in kind of the best location on the site because you wouldn't really want it anywhere else on the site because it would be either in front of the building or in the parking area. So, so I think-
Is it the whole fence or just a piece of?
I think it's-
It's probably about 20 feet, I think, not much more than that.
So, here's a suggestion that maybe Mr. O'Brien would entertain.
Yeah, I apologize, I-
My suggestion would be if the adjoining property owner does not object to it, that if we had an agreement from the applicant that said, if the adjoining property owner sells, transfers the property and I have to remove the fence, at that time I would move the fence.
I'd rather move it myself.
Oh, you want to, oh.
Yeah, no, seriously.
Oh, good. There's no way.
I was going to suggest you put a Christmas bow on it and say, Merry Christmas, I got you a fence.
You know, it's not a real big job and some of the sections have already replaced because they do rot away.
Right.
And they're eight-foot sections and maybe I have to replace six or seven. And I'll be willing to take on that task and keep it right on or inside the property line.
And you understand where, you understand where the railing is that they request to be added to?
Oh, yes, yeah, I've already contracted for a railer to do his job.
So, we're going to try to determine exactly how we want to handle the fence issue and we'll let you know.
Sure.
If you work for the building department, it's possible that you could need to go to the zoning board for a variance, but we're going to look at it and see if we can avoid doing that.
A variance for the fence.
Yeah, possibly, if it's, if it's, if we can't-
District, I don't know, the two feet of line.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know, we're going to, we're going to-
And that would mean moving the fence as tight as you can to the generator and then getting a variance to allow it in that position. We'll have to-
Okay.
We'll check.
So you'll-
Theoretically, the fence could also be at the zero lot line, right? It doesn't have to be, have a setback. Okay. Well, yes. I mean, it's supposed to, the fences are supposed to be two feet off the property line typically. Oh, because it's six feet, I'm sorry, you're right. Right, because that whole rule, but-
It would be a dimensional variance, which is, can be granted by the zoning board.
Correct. 90 days should be sufficient to request that. So do you, are you following what we're saying? So because it's a six-foot fence, it needs to be two feet off your property line, your generator is only 1.2 feet off your property line, so if you want to maintain a six-foot fence, even if you moved that fence to within your property line, you would still need to go to the zoning board for a variance to allow the six-foot fence.
If it was a four-foot fence, we would have to follow the same guidelines?
But we have to see what was on his original site plan. It may have been approved as a six-foot fence.
Okay, so we'll, we'll do a little research and then let you know exactly what has to get done. Okay.
Scott and I were just, maybe we should make it-
I'm sorry, I thought we already had the original site plan, that's my-
Maybe we should make it 120 days because 90 days put us into March and the weather may not be the best yet.
And if he has to go to the zoning board, give us a little more time.
So 120 days would be-
Okay.
Okay. And that's going to be roughly till the end of April to be able to replace the fence, get any zoning variance you require.
Okay.
You need to be in compliance by that time.
And I'll get a letter from you guys to tell me exactly what to do.
I'll probably give you a call.
Okay, great.
Okay. Were there any other, any other items we needed to discuss with regard to the plan? I know, as Tom said, we've got a, we've got a motion, I just want to make sure there's nothing else.
There's, I mean, we're all okay with the, the additional development downstairs and all that. We've already cleared that, right? It's just down to those three points, so I'm good.
Right, so the change of use.
And then the only caveat to that is whatever permits maybe required through the billing department, you're still responsible-
Yes.
-of obtaining those from the building.
Right. Mr. Kronizer did walk through and I'm aware of a few things that have to be done.
The, the fire advisory board asked about a secondary egress and wanted to make sure that the use of the downstairs was, met the building and fire code.
I believe it does, but we'll vet that when he comes in for the permit.
That's, the fed-up permit takes care of all of that.
Okay. So just to be clear then, the, the fire advisory board concern will be addressed through the building department permitting.
Whatever requirements you have to meet, you'll do that at the building department.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members?
Nope.
Does somebody want to offer the, actually, I'm not sure we need, Tom, do we need to read this? This just summarizes that we're approving-
It just summarizes-
Change of use, right?
Right, that, that the conversion of the 2,000 square feet of storage to 2,000 square feet of permitted use of retail or office space is allowed under zoning, there's sufficient parking, the planner has verified that. And therefore, in light of that, you deem this to be a minor amendment to the site plan, not requiring a full amended site plan, and you're approving it subject to the three conditions we just spelled out.
And we didn't need to do a change of use because these existing uses fall within the same-
Correct.
Because right now you've got medical use there and these aren't medical-
No, it was permitted in that zone permits all the uses that it has.
So you don't, you're not requiring the change, okay. Okay. Any, any other questions from the board on the, on the resolution? Because it's a resolution of determination, do I need to do a single vote call or can we just vote as?
You can just take a motion, second.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution of determination for Kucherewski site plan?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. The motion carries. And again, just stay in touch with us, we'll, to resolve your, your fence and the generator issue and make sure that the railing is installed, work with the building department for that.
The railing's going to be installed, I think, in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
I went through the site, I think it's a great site. Nice job.
Pardon me?
I went through the site, I think it's great.
Yeah, I, I take pride in the building, I really do. It's one of the, the best buildings in, in East Fishkill, I think.
It shows.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Hunter's Ridge amended subdivision plan for lots on Devon Farms Road.
It's a brand-new day when scenic Hudson and turning a farm back into a farm struggles. That's a new day.
I was in Philadelphia at 3:30, my friend, so I got some feet.
No, traffic's unbelievable. It's almost like it's Christmas. I don't know, I don't know if you guys are aware of this job, this is the Hunter's Ridge job. It's only been in front of you for like 15 years. And as we discussed at the last go-around, we're looking to do four lots, looking to remove the eight lots and the town road and just doing four individual lots. We talked to Town Highway and Scott's office and we kind of reconfigured the driveways slightly since the last time you saw this, this application. So it'd be lots two and three. We brought the driveways, driveway entrances close to each other right along Devon Farms and that leaves lot one and lot four driveway locations to the north and south.
So they're sharing an apron in the right-of-way, right? They're not actually joined within the properties themselves?
Yeah, the, the actual, the actual pavement is within the town right-of-way, so we won't need a shared driveway easement or maintenance agreement or anything like that. And then two, in talking to, to Bill McClellan and to Scott, there was the thought of trying to push back that bank so we don't have this cavernous effect coming up Devon Farms Road where the driveway cuts. And I think, I talked to the applicant about it and I think it sells for a better project if we take that bank, we move it back, have like a uniform entrance or a uniform grading at those entrance locations. I think what we'd like to do, if possible, to avoid any kind of easements and who does what, when and where and how, to try to do that grading action before final approval. We were thinking we could push that bank back as the weather improves, like maybe around the end of March, so that when we do complete that action, we can put stabilizing erosion and sediment control down to mitigate any disturbances along that, that stretch of road.
Okay.
Other than that, fairly straightforward, individual wells, individual septic, we're probably going to be poking around out there with the board of health this week to re-verify some soils because we shifted a couple of septic locations around.
Okay.
And I think everybody was here at the last meeting, but we did end up putting up a conservation easement on the top of the, of the knob on lots two and, lots one and two.
Okay.
It's about four acres in size, plus or minus.
Hey, Brian, what's the, I'm sorry, what's the schedule you want to work on? I mean, you, you said final approval, I mean, you know, can we proceed to a public hearing with this or?
I mean, if, providing the board, there's, there's enough here for the board to move forward. We'd like to take this to the public hearing level and get the neighbors in front of you and circulate or recirculate for lead agency, I would assume. But yeah, that would be obviously the next step.
Question.
So I, so you-
I'm sorry, do you have to go back to the health department or do you have it configured that you're able to use anything you previously?
We have two lots out of, of the three, we have two lots out of the four that we can definitely reuse. We have two lots that I think I found better soil locations.
Go back.
Yeah. We would, we would have had to go back anyway because technically what they have in front of them right now is an eight-lot subdivision, so.
But that would have been almost a formality, but if you've got new locations and new-
There's no such thing as a formality of a government agency. Just going to throw that out there. But yes, it's, it shouldn't be that bad.
Okay.
So, you were asking for permission to proceed with the grading, right? I mean-
Yeah, and I-
For preliminary.
Yeah, I think what we'd like to do is, we'd like to do the grading action. Obviously, right now with the weather being where it's at and stabilization being a key[1676.58] Obviously, right now with the weather being where it's at and stabilization being a key topic and still possibly running down at Devon Farms, we'd like to do that action before final. We'd probably get preliminary, hopefully relatively quick because of the history with this application and the fact that we're, we're downsizing this application. I can't really see there being any too much or any public issues coming in forward. But yeah, between preliminary and final, we'd probably make that grading action happen.
Brian, you've got the comments from Michelle and from Pete, from Morris.
I think I have, I don't know if I have Michelle's comments, but I know I have Pete's.
Okay. Michelle just had a couple of notes. There was a couple of things to be updated on the notes of the plan.
Yeah, that's fine.
Nothing, nothing major.
No showstoppers?
Nope.
I like that.
And then the fire advisory board, their comments, and I can hand this off to you. The FAB recommends intermediate pull-offs on the driveways of one and two. Prefer to have one from each driveway connect to each other near the 500-foot from the roadway mark to allow for a turnaround in the event of an emergency in either driveway.
Yeah, that's, we've done that before.
So kind of allow them to snake between them if they had to. Okay. And it looks like you've got, I mean, you've got the pull-ups. It's just that I think they're both on the same side. I think if you just moved one of them over so they were next to each other, that's probably accomplishing what they're looking for. Any concern or, I can give you the comments if you need it.
I mean, if there's no concern, I mean, if Scott is, and Tom is okay with doing that, I would assume that...
What, butting the two pull-offs?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not opposed to it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members? Michelle, Scott, Tom?
The only thing you may, the reason that the fire advisory board wants some butt-togethers for fire equipment, is that right? So you may want to discuss with them some means to put some kind of amountable delineation between the two. Just if the neighbors don't want people using it frequently. So maybe you can work a detail out with the, you know, maybe a mow strip, maybe just something that makes everybody happy.
They just wanted to be able to switch from one to the other in the event that something's happening.
Right, but then I don't know what would cause a problem for the homeowners if they butt plowing.
I'm with you.
Although generally when I encounter a fire truck in my driveway, it's kind of a special occasion.
But it's not the fire truck. It's...
It's not the fire truck you're worried about. I get it. I get it.
Guest truck that drives up and then comes down the other guy's driveway.
I know you said you...
Well, the kids, Mary, everybody's got kids.
I know. I'm sorry.
So I know you said you wanted to pull... Sorry? I know you said you wanted to pull the, the grading and start that. Is there any change that you need to make to the plan based on the grading that's proposed or just to get it done?
Well, I still need to butt up some of the stormwater aspects of it. I mean, as far as showing that on the plan, it's, the grading that's there, it's just gonna be expanded slightly. We're not talking about a major revision.
Are you anticipating that anything you're doing with the stormwater is gonna significantly change the plan?
No. We showed areas of, we're gonna be treating this with individual bioretention areas. Disturbance is under five acres, so we're not getting into that crazy standard that the E.C. has for stormwater. So individual treatment on each lot.
Michelle, does this have to be recirculated?
Well, I'm actually, I was just thinking that...
Four lots right now.
I think we, you can just, yeah, it went down in lots, there's less disturbance. I think the only thing we should just verify is that there's no additional steep slopes. But none of that would, I don't think, trigger any of the secret issues, so...
Well, the only thing as far as the public hearing, in case this driveway location has moved to some of...
Public hearing.
And impacting the neighbor, that's...
Well, I'm not saying no public hearing. I was asking for recirculation for secret...
I don't think we need to recirculate. I think we just need to reaffirm that you're lead agency and make your findings.
Okay. Okay. Because I'm looking at January 16th as the next meeting date. It looks like we can meet the notice requirements. Pam, I'm looking at you. It's the 19th tonight. 11, yeah. A little better than, a little better than 20 days.
I can do it. He's paying the bill. I can do anything.
So it's tight, though, Brian. You'd have to kind of...
It's like a tomorrow thing.
Get it out, yeah. Exactly. Okay. All right. If there's no other questions or comments, do I have a motion to put Hunter's Ridge amended subdivision plan on for public hearing for January 16th?
So moved.
A motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
You, too.
John, Merry Christmas.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the McDonald's amended site plan on Route 376.
Last but least, right? Good evening, folks. My name is Alan Roscoe. I'm from Core State's Architecture and Engineering. Local offices, believe it or not, in Boston, Massachusetts. And I'm the Northeast Civil Lead managing the Northeast Regional Projects. You've probably noticed in several communities here in, in New York and upstate that a lot of the McDonald's are being renovated. And this is one of them. It's called the SBS program or it's a major remodel program. I'll just run through the program real typical. There's three main elements. It's interiors, exteriors, and site work. So the interior of the building, most all the projects are having ADA upgrades to the restrooms and to the dining areas, some new furniture in the dining rooms and new counters and condiment areas and things of that nature. And that's fairly typical across the program. Exteriors is a total reskin, new color schemes. It's a rebranding. It's a much more neutral color palette on the exteriors. Typically, it's either a taupe or a gray in that family. And then in the exteriors, depends on the site, obviously, but a lot of the projects are getting dual ordering stations and the likes, changes to the drive-through lanes and things of that nature. And it's all dependent upon volume. This particular site doesn't meet a lot of the thresholds, so it's fairly simple. It'll have the components for the interior of the building and the exterior. The site work is gonna be very limited. It's ADA compliance only. So we'll resurface a portion of the parking area with concrete where the ADA spots are located because we have better elevation and slope controls. New striping for the pathways and repair the sidewalks around the building. And then we're simply replacing the ordering equipment with program new equipment. And there's no expansion to the use. There's no expansion to the drive-through lanes, no changes to the site parking configuration, no reduction in spaces.
The location of the ordering board will still be in the same place?
Identical, yeah.
Updated.
Pretty much identical, yeah. So it's a fairly limited project, but we know that we do require site plan approval. So that's really why we're here tonight.
Alan, McDonald's is going towards, you know, remote ordering, more and more remote ordering. Is that, is this tied to that at all or is this...
Not at this time, but it is in the future.
So the idea would be that people will be spending less time there, just more, you know, right?
Yeah, probably future rollouts. I'm not sure if it would happen at this location. But some locations are getting self-order kiosk. And then others are also moving towards having a host or a greeter that will actually sit you to your table. It's more like a sit-down family restaurant. You know, they'll seat you, they'll go and get your food for you, bring it out if you're dining inside. You know, so there's a lot of things that are happening. But, but this one is very simple. I don't see the kiosk happening at this location. But yeah, it's some simple site work and, you know, we're here to...
And I don't mean to make it more...
No, that's fine. I'm happy to discuss it.
This was a facilitating part for that.
With the exterior work, have you been before our architectural review board yet?
As I understand it, that's the next step in the process, right? So I'm not sure if it's a separate application, separate board.
They are a separate board from this board. This is the planning board, yep.
You don't wear both hats? Now, is that a separate application, Pam?
Okay. And then, Michelle, I think we had talked about whether there was any additional landscape or lighting plan needed, but I'm hearing there's no, there's no other change to the property. So I don't think landscaping or lighting that was being proposed is different from what's out there right now.
Yeah, not in this program. The site scope is very limited. If there's a problem, then it will certainly be addressed.
And then sign is gonna be switched out in a new design?
There's probably some new directional signage, you know, the current program. But are you talking about the site sign?
Yeah. And the menu board will be switched out, maybe?
That will be switched, yes. Yeah. There's a, there's a, the clearance bar that you've seen and the pre-sale board, which has the menu on it, and then the actual ordering board will be switched out.
You may or may not need a sign permit once you know exactly what you're doing. So you, we can just talk on the planner and we can have a conversation about what you're, exactly what it is when you know what exactly what it is and when you know what the design is and we'll get that to happen.
Yeah, it's all program equipment. So there's, you know, some variation in the sizes that we can have. Obviously, we've got to tailor it to meet zoning, so...
So can we, can we condition for the ARB review on this one?
Just the ARB because that'd be a condition of a building permit normally anyway if they weren't with you.
Okay. This is a, we appreciate that you're renovating the parking lot, but from a site plan perspective, this is a very minor change. It doesn't sound like you're really relocating anything or doing any major site work on the site. So we have a resolution of determination stating that this is our term de minimis and therefore doesn't require any additional public hearing. But we would make this, make a motion to approve your amended site plan subject to the review of the ARB. And was there anything else we needed to be subject to? We, our comments from the fire...
We're just gonna double-check the lighting and then make sure all the site, other site requirements are in order.
Okay. So subject to ARB and review of landscaping and lighting plan?
Right.
Okay. And you're not, you don't believe you're proposing changes to it? We just want to make sure. Is that correct?
Well, I know that we're not unless there's a reason to do so. If the lighting is malfunctioning, then...
It would be in the form of repairs if there's any other repairs.
Yes. It's part of their operations. And then obviously, if there's any, I mean, this is not very heavily landscaped. You know, it's fairly a natural kind of a scene. So if there was something damaged during construction, it would obviously be replaced.
And then the only other comment I have was from the fire advisory board recommending a Knox Box rapid entry system if it's not already in place.
I'll research that, but that's certainly a condition we can live with.
Okay.
And just so I understand...
So you'll install that if it's not already there?
Yeah. And just so I understand, the ARB is for the building and the site work together?
Just the building.
The building. Site work is the...
Building department. So basically, you just want to make sure he's in conformance with prior approved site plan.
Right.
Aside from any new improvements that are proposed.
Separate from the ARB approval, which will be the exterior work, that the ARB just reviews the exterior that you're proposing for the building? Okay. All right. So the motion is to approve a minor site plan amendment to include a review by the ARB of the exterior building, review of the landscaping and lighting plans through the building department and subject to installation, if it's not already there, of a Knox Box rapid entry system.
You know, I just don't want to limit it to, like, for instance, if there's a gate off the dumpster enclosure, that would be a repair. So just conformance with the previously approved site plan.
I want to add that as four and conformance with all, with all other aspects of the existing plan.
Right.
Okay.
Are there any that you know of?
Nothing about. I don't want to go out at night and make sure the lights are working and all that kind of stuff. So we'll do that.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody have any other...
I was gonna say.
Are you hungry?
If you're on the road, you might need it.
I've already annoyed Tom once tonight. I'm not going there again.
I was gonna say, what are you thinking, apple pie? Hot fudge sundae?